Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 1st, 2022 City Council Meeting. We'd like to invite Reverend Jesse Reynoso, Word of Life Church, up to deliver the invocation. Oh, let me get your microphone just a minute. There we go.
Thank you. Let us go before the Lord. God, we thank you for this day here, God. We pray right now in Jesus' name for the city members here, God, the city council, the mayor, the city manager, God, for wisdom and guidance and direction, God. God, that your peace and your love and your joy would be here in this room, God, that everybody would be able to fill it, God. We just ask, Lord God, that, Lord, that you would just be with everyone here today, God, and safe and sound-mindedness, God, and help us here today, God, in every agenda that's here tonight, God, that you would be in the midst of it. God, honor those who need to be honored, God, and just allow your Spirit to be here in their hearts and their minds, God. And, Lord, that you would bless the city council members, God, that they would not only, Lord God, be the city council members here in this building, God, but they would be the same on our streets, God. And, Lord, that they would be known by their conduct and their integrity, God. And, Lord, that you would just protect, Lord God, our city officials, our law enforcement, Lord God, every first responder and everybody, Lord God, that's in that field, Lord. Lord, we ask, Lord God, that you would remove the corruption on the streets, God. Let this be, let this be a safe community and city for everybody to dwell in, God. Lord, we thank you at this time, and we give you all glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'll now call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM, and we'll ask Police Chief Breezy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
President.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis here.
Wallace.
Here.
Correa.
Here. We have a quorum. Move on to item four, consideration of approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
I'll second that, thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Now we'll move to item five, presentations, and I will come down there to do the most enjoyable part of this job. Okay, very good. Most enjoyable part of this job is to be able to recognize the good stuff, and we have a lot of good stuff to recognize tonight. So we would like to start with Mr. Gutierrez. Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing State Farm Day. Whereas State Farm is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2022, and whereas State Farm was founded in the United States on the 7th day of June in the year 1922 by G.J. Meckerle, Meckerle? No, no. A farmer from Myrna, Illinois. Whereas Joe Gutierrez is a State Farm agent in our city and has been assisting customers since 1988, and whereas he has a passion for being involved in our community by way of being a member of the Los Banas Chamber of Commerce coaching basketball and has volunteered as a Board of Trustees for the Merced College and Memorial Hospital for a combined period of 22 years. And whereas the city of Los Banas recognizes the positive impact Mr. Joe Gutierrez and State Farm have on our community as they have been taking care of customers in the city of Los Banas for 34 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby recognize June 7th, 2022, the State Farm Day in the city of Los Banas, and encourage residents to observe the day by demonstrating what being a good neighbor is all about through acts of kindness and making people welcome. Mr. Gutierrez. Say a few words.
Thank you. Never give an insurance agent the microphone.
Or a board member.
Or a board member. June 7th, 1922, the company was founded by George Mahurle, who started in Bloomington, Illinois. June 7th, 2022, next Tuesday, we'll celebrate 100 years. We, 17,000 agents from New York all the way to Los Banas and the rest of California and Hawaii and Alaska will come together in Las Vegas at Allegiant Stadium, home of the former Oakland Raiders. But we will convene with our spouses, thousands of employees, hundreds of company leadership, close to about 60,000 people will come together on June 7th. I will thank you guys when I'm over there. Jake from State Farm will be there.
Jake.
Aaron Rogers will be there. Patrick Mahomes will be there, and Chris Paul. So I thank you. I will hang this in my office with pride, and I plan on having a 100th celebration anniversary at my office. On September 29th, I will definitely invite all of you, and we will celebrate here locally. Thank you, and thank the council for this proclamation. Appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome. Thanks for, thanks for all you do. Mr. Gutierrez. I've got to check to see who I'm giving the next one to. Can you read my agenda, please? Got to check to see the next one doesn't have a name on it. There we go. We would ask if you could please silence your cell phones, put them on vibrate or turn them off during the meeting. Very good. And so our next proclamation is for the 50th anniversary of Golden Valley Health, and we would like to invite Yamilat Valadolid. I hope I pronounced it right. If I didn't, you, people, please correct me. Director of Government and Community Affairs.
Thank you so much.
Hi.
I also want to give our leadership here.
Oh, very good.
For Los Palos and Los Banos. So we thank you so much for this proclamation. We are celebrating 50 years, and it's such a pleasure to be able to do this here in Los Banos and be able to expand health access and health equity to everyone. And with that said, I'm going to give it back because I think I took the microphone from you.
That's all right. I gave it. And I gave it willingly. Welcome. And so here's the proclamation, recognizing the 50th anniversary of Golden Valley Health Centers. Whereas Golden Valley Health Centers began serving the Central Valley and the city of Merced in 1972, and whereas Golden Valley Health Center's team of doctors, dentist, behavioral health counselors, other medical professionals and their teams are committed to providing quality healthcare services regardless of language, financial, or cultural barriers. And whereas Golden Valley Health Centers is a federally qualified health center that provides medical, dental, behavioral health, and specialties to over 150,000 patients in Merced, Stanislaw, and San Joaquin Counties through their 45 locations. And whereas Golden Valley Health Centers has been certified as an advocacy center of excellence by the National Association of Health Centers, which is a community health center that creates a culture of advocacy to ensure that policymakers at all levels of government commit to investing in affordable, equitable, and innovative healthcare that health centers provide. And whereas Golden Valley Health Centers is celebrating its 50th anniversary in 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby congratulate Golden Valley Health Centers on its 50th anniversary and recognize the dedication and commitment it has to the health and well-being of residents in our community and surrounding areas. And I'm pleased to present this. I've been a strong advocate of Golden Valley Health. I remember when Mary Michael Rawling was over there. Now she's, now she's at MCAG. So you guys do wonderful work, and we very, very much appreciate it.
Thank you. We'd love to be here. Just a quick introduction. I'm the center manager there at the local, like, here for Los Palos and Los Banos location. This is the supervisor, co-owners with myself. She's a, 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 a,
Okay. I didn't get much notice on this, but I think it was mostly for volunteering with the vaccination clinics when they first came to town. And I was happy to do that.
We're happy you did as well.
Driven for.
Thank you so much. Ah, celebrating the good stuff. Thank you everyone for all you do. And I'll go back behind the Plexiglas. All right. No, Refugio's is on. Ken's is off. Okay, everybody's is off except mine now. All right. My marker. Now we'll be moving to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber information table. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city residence. And first, we have...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Silveira, Merced County Supervisor for District Five. And I have Ann McCauley here with me. Just wanted to highlight on those two presentations, proclamations that you just made a few minutes ago. The Merced County Board of Supervisors every year recognizes an individual and a group from each district. And one of the struggles that we face is a lot of times, we give out 10 awards, but a lot of times, the West Side doesn't represent very well. This year, we're very fortunate to have in Jerry who did miraculous work when we were setting up clinics when none of us had ever set up vaccine clinics before and being a part of that. And then Pastor Hammond at Bethel Community Church was recognized for their work that they did during the pandemic with not only homeless services, but also just senior services. Folks that all of a sudden didn't have the ability to get out and get food and started programs where they were delivering hot meals, delivering food boxes. So again, just on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, want to congratulate them for the work that they've done throughout this pandemic and helping us with their volunteerism. And then my ask of you guys is, is as this, we do this annually, next year is, is if you recognize individuals or groups within the community that you think are worthy, it's a pretty simple form to get on the county's website. I'll try to remember to send out an email to the city manager and can send it out to all of the council members and the mayor. Help me in finding those folks. I don't want to give up my spot to one of the other districts. And that's happened in the past. So I'm asking you guys if you guys could help. And the reason that I have Ann up here with me is, is she is, I heard some great things from my predecessor, Jerry O'Bannon. One of them being, Ann is my person that I call on that actually screens all of, this year, how many applications do we have?
Total of thirty-one. And seventeen alone came from the district in Merced.
Yeah, so you can kind of see where we're a little bit at a disadvantage there. But Ann, every year, make the phone call, drives over, comes to the board meeting when we recognize them. So I just want to thank her for being my person that helps to be able to screen through those applications. And again, ask you folks to, if you can, or if you do see somebody out there that you think is worthy of the honor, please send them my way. Ann, want to say a few words?
It's been a real pleasure. I didn't know until this year that I had been judging this for eight years. And I guess no one else has done it quite this long. But it's really, and this year was really quite a load with thirty-one. We've never had as many as seventeen, maybe no more than ten from one district. So it's, there was really a lot of competition out there. All of the people are recognized. But we always have, there's like Steve, Scott was saying, there's two categories, on the individual volunteer and the organization volunteer. And it's a great program, and we just want to get the word out that if you know volunteers, you know, make sure that, that somebody is nominating them. Or if, on the other hand, if you are, or organizations, the same thing. There's a, it doesn't matter what they, what they do in volunteerism. There's a whole range of different kinds of activities that different volunteers have done. And it's really a keen competition, but it's wonderful because we recognize all of them. And we need to boost it in Los Banos.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak in the public forum?
My name is Claudia Nunez. I have, I live here in Merced County. We have been coming to the meetings for a while now. And I just thought of something when we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, it says liberty and justice for all. We, our community feels our liberty has been taken away because we are afraid to go outside because the homeless are around everywhere with their drugs. And I've heard gunshots out there. They've had fires that started spreading last week. I had to call 911. They had fire going. It started spreading in the grass. It burned part of, one of the man's tents. They're moving from where the city put them. They're moving into the big lot again. And it says also justice for all. We have not received justice from anybody. You guys hear us, but you're not listening to what we're saying. You probably think that we're just here flapping our lips for nothing because we want attention. Yeah, we want attention. We want those homeless moved. It's not, it's not fair at our ages to have to be afraid to go outside of our house. Like I said last time, I go to church every morning. I'm afraid to go home sometimes because I'm afraid when I get there, somebody's going to be in my home. They've gone into some of the mobile homes. They start tearing up stuff outside. They've stolen bikes. They stole my friend's wheelchair. We have been deprived of our liberty, of our happiness. And you guys can help us, but you have to listen with your heart. Unless you want some catastrophe to happen, them to come over with their guns or something and shoot us so they can get, steal whatever we have. Please listen this time. Hear us. We need help. Or we wouldn't keep coming over here begging you guys. We're begging this time. We've already asked so many times. Now we're begging you, please help us. All of you, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis. I'm the Assistant Manager at Rancho Las Banas Mobile Home Park. I live here in Las Banas. I moved here in 1969, and I embraced Las Banas as my home. And I've always been proud to live here. But I feel like we are not being listened to. And I know, I know some of you personally. We had a meeting with the Chief of Police on May 3rd. And we talked, I told him that we would go forth from here on out, that we wouldn't go from the past of all the things that had happened in the past with the homeless and how they've terrorized us. We've asked, and he said to us that he would do what he could, and that he would talk to his supervisor, and then he would put out notices to have them removed, to ask them to move. Because you, I guess you have to give them a two-week notice. That has been since May 3rd. I have not seen them move. So that, he said he had to have a week for, to talk to a supervisor and get it okayed. And then two weeks, and then a two weeks' notice. That's three weeks. In that time, we've seen more people come in and not leave. So we're not hearing, you're not hearing us. We've asked to be on the agenda. We're not able to be on the agenda, apparently. And I don't know how to get on the agenda if you won't let us go there. So you, you tell us how to get on the agenda because we've tried. And it says to us, when you don't put us on the agenda, you are ignoring us. And I hold each and every one of you responsibility, responsible for our safety. We're not young citizens out there. Most of us are elderly. And most, and there's a lot of families that are Hispanic that will not complain. They will not speak up for themselves. They will just put up with it. And that's not right. I want to be their voice. I want to be the voice of all of us. I want you to hear us. We're not going to go away. Please, I'm, I'm, I'm like our tenant here. Claudia, when are you going to listen to us? When are you gonna, when are you going to come visit us? Councilman Lewis, Councilman Lambert, Panero, Mayor Faria, the attorney, Mr. Jones, Mr. Lamas has come. When are you going to come and see what we go through? When are you going to come see our community? You're ignoring us. And it makes me ashamed of Los Banas. And I've always embraced Los Banas. And I am ashamed of this city. Thank you.
My name is Ray Walton. I live in Merced County. And I'm here to, first of all, thank the Police Department for helping us out with our diversity program. And we're leading United African-American citizens. I want to thank the Highway Patrol. I want to thank the school district. But what I want to do is not thank City Hall. I came to City Hall looking to put up posters like this about diversity. And your city manager refused meet with me, period. He's called me once. We've talked about four or five minutes. And that's not good enough. You know, diversity, when it comes to diversity, you're talking about bullying. You're talking about harassment. You're talking about the things that these ladies talked about, the homeless. And it's a big problem. I live behind Walmart. I don't deal with the homeless that much. But I go around this town and I see it. I see it. It's not good. And there's another way to deal with it. But like they said, I'm gonna say about one person, for sure, he's not listening. He's not paying attention. He doesn't want to talk. He doesn't want to even get on the phone. That's ridiculous to me. Now, I'm working with Merced City. They've donated money to organizations. They're serious. They know bullying's a big problem. Harassment's a big problem. Los Banos hasn't done anything other than the Police Department, I think, Serena, Sabreezy, and their group, and Highway Patrol. And I just want to let you know that, hey, this town needs to do something now while you're small. Let's not wait till it gets way out of control. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak in the public forum?
Good evening. My name is Gene Lieb, publisher of the new West Side Express newspaper. Second edition came out today. It formerly was the Dos Palos Sun, but we changed the name and included more geography. So it covers Fireball, Dos Palos, Los Banos, and Centinela. And I just wanted to come up here and let you know that. And to introduce Malina Duran, who is the reporter who will be covering city council and the planning commission meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak in public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, everybody. My name is John Cornell. I live in Las Banas. I'm proud to live in Las Banas. And things have been happening in our little neighborhood over there that aren't really terrible. And last night, it really hit home. I live in the very front of the park, right next to the office. I'm part of the furthest tenant away from where the action is. But my neighbor's house had been broken into two or three times in the last couple of weeks. I have lights up that flash off when I see, you know, there's any, you know, movement lights and stuff like that. And last night, I decided that, as much as I hate to, I got a baseball bat at my front door, I've got a baseball bat at my back door, and I've got a baseball bat right next to me. I'm not young. I can't move as fast as I can. I'm an ex-felon. I can't have a gun. And I wouldn't want a gun anyway because that's not going to solve anything. I always, I want to say that I appreciate what's been going on, really, you know, good enough from you guys. I've noticed like a lot of them patrolling and stuff lately. And that makes me feel really good. But what does it make me feel good is, I've got an eighty-eight-year-old father in my house that can't move myself. I can't move that much faster, but, you know, I'm just really worried. I just feel that something, someone's going to get hurt. And, and as far as they're, they're moving out of their appointed area, you know, it was very nice to the city to, to set all that up. And, you know, that's, that was a really good start as far as helping homeless. I think so. But until it got out of hand, and now it's gotten out of hand where nobody, it interferes with too many other things, you know, on the side that people can get in trouble. You know, or a law for this, or a law for that, you know, you can't just walk up and talk to somebody without getting in trouble. I do want to let you guys know, we do appreciate the extra patrolling. It's not, our side is all not negative, you know. But we, we've got to come up with something. Got to come up with something. Maybe put up some signs or something, or, because I know that you guys have county workers going in there to help the guys out and stuff, which is really, really outstanding. I really believe that. But there is, you guys, can you guys think of any way that we could advertise or put up a sign? Maybe they have a head foreman over there at that place, I don't know. And talk to them and tell them, these guys are here to help you, you know? Because it only takes a couple of people to ruin a whole, a whole thing. And that's what's going on. I found rigs. I've seen condoms hanging off the fence. I've seen women climb up on top of the fence, walk down the brick wall that divides Home Depot in our park.
I just want to let you know you have less than a minute left.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's kind of stuff that we have to see.
Sure.
And I myself, the one my grandson around that. And that's all. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak in public forum?
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Sandra Benetti, on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy. I'm present again before you this evening just to provide some information to the public, to Los Banos residents specifically regarding Peninsula Clean Energy's e-bikes for Everyone program. I just wanted to remind folks that the program is still open. The program provides up to $1,000 off the purchase of an electric bicycle, also known as an e-bike, for income qualifying city of Los Banos residents to make e-bikes a little bit more affordable. The program will close on June 5th, though, so you can submit an application online through June 5th. The incentive will be awarded through a lottery system on June 6th, and then winners will have up to 30 days to purchase their new e-bike. You can get helpful information regarding the program, including qualifying criteria, the online application, and sources to learn more about e-bikes at peninsulacleanenergy.com/e-bikes. And then folks can also learn more about Peninsula Clean Energy's electricity generation service for Los Banos by visiting our website at pencleanenergy.com/los-banos. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak in public forum this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public forum. And we will move to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Maloney, what do we have tonight?
Item numbers 232696 through 232901 in the amount of $729,334.09. Minutes for the May 18th, 2022 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6502, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Los Banas pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6503, calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, for the election of certain officers. Mayor-at-large for a full term of two years. Councilmember for District Two for a full term of four years. Councilmember for District Three for a full term of four years. City Clerk-at-large for a full term of four years. City Treasurer-at-large for a full term of four years, as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California. City Council Resolution Number 6504, requesting that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Merced consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, with the California statewide general election to be held on the date pursuant to Section 10403 of the Election Code. City Council Resolution Number 6505, adopting a revised budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the Administration Department General Fund Professional Services account in the amount of $25,000. City Council Resolution Number 6506, authorizing the city manager to enter into Measure V Regional Project Funding Agreement for the Pacheco Boulevard SR 152, Regional Path Project between the City of Los Banas and Merced County Association of Governments. City Council Resolution Number 6507, approving and adopting Final Track Map Number 2016-301, East Center, Phase 3A, and Accompanying Subdivision Improvement Agreement, Pioneer Development Company, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6508, accepting public improvements for South Brook at Stone Creek, The Villages 4, Phase 2B, Unit 1, Anderson Homes, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6509, accepting public improvements for South Brook at Stone Creek, The Villages 4, Phase 2B, Unit 2, Anderson Homes, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6510, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget by increasing appropriations in the General Fund for Professional Services for Engineering in the amount of $156,500. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you very much. Any council member like to pull any items for, from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Mr. Lambert, let's see, let's get your mic. There you go. Mr. Lambert.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
I have a motion by Mayor Pretend Lambert and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Once again, thank you staff for all the work that goes into that. We do it as one motion, but it means the staff has many, many, many hours getting that. Lots of exciting stuff going on there. Moving on to item eight, public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein, use this microphone system, in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. First public hearing, item A, is to receive public comment and consideration of an ordinance to adopt the Los Banas Police Department Military Equipment Policy as required by California Assembly Bill 481 and Government Code Section 7070-7075. And this will involve ordinance number 1196, which will, adopting a military equipment policy and adding Chapter 12 to Title IV of the, of the Los Banas Municipal Code to adopt a military equipment use ordinance. For this item, we go to Police Commander Melton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Justin Melton. I'm our operations commander for the Police Department. And we're here today to present information on AB 481 for the second time as required per statute. I know some of this may be redundant, and I want to cover, cover some of the key information for anyone in the public who may have tuned in and missed the prior presentation. So going over our agenda, on May 18th, I presented in great detail the requirements of AB 481. I covered our equipment and explained the functional use and application of the equipment outlined in AB 481. I also explained that Police Department website is, there is much more detailed information there containing and outlining our inventory and equipment listed in AB 481. Tonight, we'll touch briefly on a couple of topics. Why AB 481? How AB 481 defines military equipment? And why we use the equipment? We'll talk about some of the funding sources we use to purchase the equipment as well. Just remember, every law enforcement agency in the state of California is required to present on this topic. It's more than anything, more than anything, this presentation is meeting a new legal requirement to continue the use of the equipment we've been using in some cases for decades. So why AB 481? In September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed several police reform bills to increase transparency, oversight, and increase accountability. The bill requires agencies to publish how and when we purchase equipment and report annually on any new purchases of the equipment. We also are required by statute to document any complaints or concerns that were received by the public. Each year, we'll give an annual report anytime the equipment is used. And part of the requirement for AB 481 is to reach out to the community, which is why we're here today to present the material publicly. Our first annual report will be due May of 2023, which will include any audits or, or equipment uses that we have. So AB 481 requires council approval for the continued use of items purchased before January 1st of 2022. It also identifies the items that will be needed to be continued in the annual report. Several of the items listed in AB 481 afford officers the ability to gain time, distance, and cover. Remember, the goal we have and one of our primary missions is to take those subjects who are noncompliant into custody with the least restrictive options available. Just a side note, each person using any equipment outlined in AB 481 has been certified they've received additional training by post and our agency. has been certified they've received additional training by post and our agency. So some of the funding mechanisms used to obtain equipment in AB 481, essentially any funding mechanism. We use heavily the General Fund. We use grant funding and reallocation of city resources. Something to note, we do not have any inventory of any equipment obtained through the 1208 or the 1033 program, which is the military surplus equipment. So here's a brief snapshot of our equipment that we have. I went into it in great detail last time. Just a note is that out of the 15 categories defined by legislation, the Police Department has equipment listed in five of those categories. This list is a brief overview of the equipment. We currently have, a more comprehensive and detailed list is available on our website and will remain available permanently. We'll update the list annually as part of our ongoing reporting of requirements. So how does this affect Los Banos? We are here because we need your support to continue to use these items. If we do not gain council approval, LBD will stop the use of items listed and identified in AB 481. We believe that this will have a negative, if we do not obtain approval, it'll have a negative impact on public safety. So AB 481 requires elected officials to approve or not approve the policies. And this is a public presentation, and we believe this equipment provides a safer community and affords the ability to effectively to address low-frequency and high liability events. So to wrap it up in summary, in September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed a series of police reform bills, AB 481. It's designed to increase transparency and accountability. Each agency in the state is required to comply. We use Lexible to draft our internal policies, which hundreds of law enforcement agencies in the state of California use the same policymaker. We adjust those policies to be reflective of our agency's needs. With the summary, staff is recommending that you waive the second reading, introduce this ordinance adopting a military equipment policy, and adding Chapter 12 to Title IV of the Los Banos Municipal Code to adopt a military equipment use ordinance. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. And are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you, Commander. Are there any questions from anyone in council? Apparently not.
No, thank you.
With that, very good. So well explained. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on item 8A? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council. Chair will entertain a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1196. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance 1196 as read by title.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1196. Ms. Lewis, would you like to move for adoption? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I got a vote, I got a motion and a second. I got so excited, ready to go to the motion, ready to go. So all in favor waiving the second reading, ordinance number 1196? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Carried? Now, Ms. Lewis. Let me get your button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1196 as read by title.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
I'll second that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to adopt ordinance number 1196. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Very good. We get that equipment. Fighting crime, it really is a war. And you really have to be equipped to fight because some of them, they are very well equipped themselves. So, thank you very much. A correction, I noticed that there were two public hearings because I saw an A and a B. I didn't see a C in my paper copy. But in the online copy, there is a C. So there are three public hearings today. Forgive my oversight. And now we'll go to the second public hearing, item 8B. To receive public comment and consideration of a final development plan, number 2021-01, and associated development agreement for Villages 5 at Stone Creek, Quail Meadows, consistent with Stone Creek Environmental Impact Report, EIR. The proposed project consists of a subdivision of approximately 70.5 acres into 271 single-family residential lots located south of West Pacheco Boulevard, west of Dock Avenue, and east of the city limit line. Assessor's parcel numbers 430-010-024 and 430-010-026, and 430-103-004, Anderson Homes. For this item, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms. Ms. Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So as you may recall, back on May 18th, the City Council opened the public hearing, received public comment, and adopted a resolution approving Final Development Plan number 2021-01 for Quail Meadows Villages at Stone Creek 5. And then at that meeting, the City Council waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number 1197 to authorize a development agreement between the City of Los Banos and Anderson Homes. So tonight, we are asking the City Council to open the public hearing, receive public comment, and waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1197 for Quail Meadows Villages at Stone Creek 5. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have any questions of Ms. Elms? Seeing none, we will move to the public hearing. I will read the ordinance. It is the uncodified ordinance number 1197, approving a development agreement between the City of Los Banos and Anderson Homes, a California corporation, for development of approximately 70.5 acres, generally located south of West Pacheco Boulevard and west of Stone Creek Boulevard. More specifically identified as assessor's parcel numbers 430-010-024, and 430-103-004, Quail Meadows Villages at Stone Creek 5. Would anyone like to speak for the public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, come back to council for a motion. I think I see Mr. Jones up first. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1197 as read by title.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second? And Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that motion, please.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Lewis to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1197. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Carried unanimously. Now we'll move to the motion to adopt. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, hang on, let me get your mic. It doesn't want to turn on here. Now it is.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1197 as read by title.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Lewis to adopt uncodified ordinance number 1197. Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, let's get that out of the way and shut that off. Now we will move to item C, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of the levy of the proposed annual assessment for the 2022-23 fiscal year for Landscape and Lighting Districts number 1 through 7 and 9 through 19. And for that, we go to Public Works Director, City Engineer, Ton. Oops.
Good evening, mayors, council member. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. As you can see, we have a little presentations for us here. This is our annual landscaping and lighting district annual assessments for fiscal year 23. The purpose of this is to open a public hearing to receive comment from the public as well as to request for council to adopt the rate increase for the assessment district as proposed. So just a little bit of background, the city currently has 18 landscaping and lighting districts. These are district number 1 through 7 and number 9 through 19, and there is no district number 8. And the purpose of this landscaping and lighting district is to maintain all the improvement that being accepted through the city. These improvements ranges anywhere from street lighting, landscape, street median in the right of ways, storm drain facilities, park and related facilities, masonry wall fences, and also included traffic signal. In the staff report, I have shared a map of our district maps, our 18 districts. These maps are continually growing as new developments are being accepted and get incorporated into the district. As you can see, it says some of the examples are part of District 17 as well as District 11. So again, the purpose of this meeting is really to hold a public hearing to confirm and authorize the levying of assessment presented in the assessment roll for each landscaping and lighting district. These assessment rolls are found in the annual report or the engineering report for each landscape district prepared by city staff. And it was posted, publicly noted, in a local newspaper on May 2022. And each of the landscaping, lighting, engineering report were made available at the Public Work Office. The annual reports for each districts are structured in six different parts. These structures were mandated by the Landscaping and Lighting District Act of 1972, and it's separated into Part A through F. Part A kind of show the plan and specifications of all the improvement that have been accepted by the city. And Part B presented a detailed cost estimates of all the expenditures that are projected for each of the landscape district. Part C showed how those estimates are being disreputed through each parcel, which show a whole list of all the parcels included in each of the district. Part D show the methods of how each parcel or how the total costs are then disreputed through each parcel. And then Part E, again, show the list of all the parcel number that are associated with each of those districts. Part F of the report shows the locations of where the public can get the detailed maps of each parcels and each lots as associated with those districts. In additions to the cost estimate provided, we also included the list of CIP, a five-year listed CIP that included in the district. So each of the districts included all the day-to-day maintenance operations and also the upgrades that will be projected as some of these districts will be required to bank some of the balance on a yearly basis. So that way, we can anticipate on a bigger capital improvement projects. As an example, I show here, this is the 2024 CIP program that will be associated with the various districts that's shown here. Some of those things can range anywhere from $10,000 to $90,000 for playground replacements or for storm drain pump replacement. This slide shows summaries of all the proposed increase for each of these districts. So in general, all of the district's staff is currently proposing a 10% increase except for District 11 and District 12 as there is a cap of 5% for those two districts. This is in line with the construction cost index rises in the 2022s. As you can see here, from March 2021 to March 2022, we have seen a change in construction cost index of over 17.4%. In additions, and I kind of want to point out for this also as part of the lighting and landscaping districts, this year, we're also piloting the AquaSmart Pro product. So for the two landscaping renovations that were approved in last meeting, we're actually going to be using the Aqua, piloting the AquaSmart Pro product as was shown by Councilmember Lewis on those two projects at Badger Flat and Vineyards. Okay, and then we'll keep, continue to see the progress of those landscaping as it install and how it progress through the years with considerations to how, you know, it would save on water conservations. So the recommendations here, I'd like for the council to consider adopting the resolution confirming the diagram and assessments and levying assessment for the landscaping district for District 1 through 7 and District 9 through 19 for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Ton. So regarding City Council Resolution Number 6511, confirming diagram assessment and levying assessments for Landscape and Lighting Districts number 1 through 7 and 9 through 19 for the 22-23 fiscal year, we will now open the public hearing. So would anyone in the public like to speak on item 8C? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And we'll bring it back to council for a motion. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6511 as read by title.
Thank you. I have a second. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6511 as read. And as it's a resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you for the excellent work, Mr. Ton, for the excellent presentation. And now we go to the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget workshop. Item 9 in our agenda. For that, Finance Director, Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I have a very long and exciting presentation for you. So feel free to stop me along the way if you have any questions. So tonight, we're here to discuss the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. This is our first workshop of the year, our first and only workshop, and then we'll bring it back to you for approval on June 15th at a public hearing. You were given a workbook with your agenda packets. That's what we'll be working off both tonight and at the next meeting. The budget workbook includes a summary of the fund balance, which can be found on page 1. That includes both the current fiscal year information and the estimated beginning balances. So where we assume that we'll be ending the current fiscal year or fiscal year 2022. It also includes on page 4, general fund revenues. The charts will show, the spreadsheets will show the requested amount for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, the estimated amount or where we assume that we'll finish out the year for 2022, what we adopted both at the beginning of the year and throughout the year, and in the actuals for comparison of 2021 and 2020. Then each of the expenditures are separated by departments, which are then separated by funds. So you'll see tabs in there that show you each department, admin, community and economic development, police, fire, et cetera. Each of those tabs are broken down in the same way as the revenues are. Again, where you have actual amounts for 2020 and 2021, both adopted and estimated amounts for 2022 or the current fiscal year, and the requested amounts for the next upcoming fiscal year, 2023. And then finally at the end, you'll find a summary of the CIP, which is our five-year plan. We do have a completely separate book that will be presented to council after the adoption. Corresponding page numbers, as we're talking about different departments and different funds, will be on the slide. So you can find them there if I forget to refer to them, and I most likely will because there's a lot of information to cover. And then for tonight, for presentation purposes, of all the columns here, we will be comparing the estimate to the requested. So the 2022 estimate to the 2023 requested amount. Budget requirements. So we are required to have, to put a public notice in the newspaper 10 days prior to the meeting. And we are also required to hold a hearing, which, as I mentioned, will be June 15, 2022. And the budget has to be adopted no later than June 30. Appropriations lapse at year end. That means that any appropriations that you've appropriated for the current fiscal year, we are no longer allowed to spend them come July 1. We have to adopt a new budget prior to expending funds, which means if we don't do it by June 30, then there won't be any money to spend and we won't be able to pay any of our bills. And then council may amend the budget after adoption, which you did tonight on two different items. Also, council must approve all expenditures. This prohibits overspending and ensures accountability and transparency for the public. So we're going to begin tonight with general fund. And start with the general fund revenues. The general fund revenues, these are highlighting our top revenue sources. And as you are aware, sales tax and property tax and other taxes make up the majority of our revenue source. It's about seventy-nine percent of the city's revenue coming into the general fund. So we heavily rely on sales tax, property tax, and other taxes. And other tax includes TOT tax and document, T M tax. So tonight, as you can see, we are anticipating an increase in sales tax. I have separated Measure H sales tax because we do have a specific spending plan for that from regular sales tax. So we're estimated to generate about six point four million in sales tax at the end of this year, and that should increase by six point six. We do have a consultant that works on these numbers for us to get more accurate numbers. And that is many services. They have been working for us for the last, I believe, five years, and they are pretty accurate when it comes to this. And they are anticipating a four percent increase in our sales tax. Measure H is doing well. That started in two thousand and nineteen. We are estimating to finish the year at three point nine, and that should increase by four percent, an increase of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Property taxes are pretty consistent. We have a slow revenue growth there or a normal consistent growth of two percent. Ending the year at four point six percent and increasing to four point seven percent. Other taxes, as I mentioned, TOT and tax, that's going from six forty-four to six sixty-eight, and other miscellaneous taxes as well. Licenses and permits, this is where we see our first decrease. And the reason that we have a decrease is because we're estimating fewer permits being issued this year in the amounts of about two hundred thousand dollars. And then also, we have a slight decrease in both business licenses and alarm fees. So we do issue alarm fees. It's not something we generally budget on, it's just something that happens. If the revenue comes in, it will be accounted for here, but it's not something that we would like to overbudget. Shared revenues, as you're aware of, wow, that are where, wow, I'm not going to be able to talk tonight. Shared revenues include fire strike team. We received over eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue in this category this year. But again, that's somewhere where we conservatively budget, so we're only budgeting ten thousand dollars. We don't anticipate having to go on strike teams, and of course, we hope there aren't any to go on, even though that's not realistic. Motor vehicle and roof fee is also down by about ninety-five hundred dollars. This is basically a fee that the government jars for the privilege of operating vehicles on public highways. It's about a two percent of the market value of your vehicle. So any time you purchase a vehicle or pay your registration fees, you assess that amount. Charges for services, oh, I'm sorry, other revenues, that is decreasing. Some of the things that we have there are admin sites, which is hard to estimate. We are anticipating an increase in recreation rentals. We had been down for a couple of years because of COVID, but we're seeing that pick back up. We have a decrease because we did have an insurance claim for reimbursement to Catholic Park. And then also, we have sales of fixed assets in the amount of about seventeen thousand. So we anticipate, that's part of the reason why that's decreasing as well. So overall, we're anticipating general fund revenues to come in at about twenty-five million dollars for the year, which is about three tenths of an increase. So seventy-four thousand dollars increase over what we're estimated, spending the year at a twenty-four point nine million dollars. Moving on to expenditures, first, I have it broken down for you by category so you can get an overall idea of where the increases are at budget-wide, and then we'll look at it individually by department. So in personnel category, which is all salaries and benefits, we have an increase of about fourteen percent or one point eight million dollars. And again, this is just the general fund. Supplies and services, we have an increase of six hundred and sixty thousand or thirteen percent. Capital outlay, we're going from one point five million to six point five million. Don't be alarmed, a lot of that has to do with the police station. And we, that's part of the spending plan that we did for the police station. We already set aside that funding, committed four million dollars, three to come out of the general fund directly, and one to come out of Measure H. So you have obviously a three hundred percent increase, but if we back that out, we're more in line with where we should be. Debt services, we have a small payment. We refinanced our debt back in, let me think, when we did this, this was years ago, two thousand and eight possibly. The both, the fire department had a loan and the city hall had a loan, and we used the water funding to pay it off. It was cheaper that way, and we're still paying that down, and I believe will be done in twenty twenty-four. Contingency fund, we're anticipated to spend the entire fifty thousand in twenty twenty-two, and then we're budgeting another fifty thousand in twenty twenty-three. So overall, we will see an increase in expenditures of thirty-seven percent. Now, we're going to look at the individual categories so you could see where these increases are. So again, citywide, we're budgeting twenty-seven million. But some of the things that I don't want to go over in each department that we have increases in throughout the budget include employee salaries and benefits. We do have different COLAs worked into this for the different groups, we'll get to that at the end. In addition to COLA increases, we have step increases. So employees that are still stepping are entitled to a five percent increase, and we have those built in if anybody's eligible for that increase. We saw house insurance increases, purse increases, our liability insurance is increasing, electricity and gas citywide, and gasoline and oil, which none of these should come as a surprise. So starting with administration, which includes all of HR, finance, and the city council, our budget is increasing by four hundred and twenty-four thousand. And some of the main reasons why are we have put in here to paint the exterior of city hall at a cost of forty thousand dollars. We do have elections this year, and that gets spread out over the different funds, meaning it gets spread out in the general fund, admin, water, sewer, and garbage. And that gets twenty-five percent to each, so the cost to the general fund is approximately six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Another ask is building and structures. We're asking to update city hall security, so the key cards and things like that that you see.
I believe we have a question, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Sonia, you, in the admin budget, you indicated that there was money being set aside to paint city hall. Is that in this fiscal budget or next year's fiscal budget?
That's in the upcoming budget, the one that we're doing is twenty twenty-three. So all these asks will be for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, okay. And what was the dollar amount set aside?
Forty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
The upgrade to city hall security would be in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and that would update not only our key cards to get in for safety purposes, but the alarm system as well. And it would put us on the same platform that police and fire uses. So the police and the fire, what they have would be able to access city hall as well. Point-to-point system, this is actually a carryover from the prior fiscal year. The point-to-point is to provide sustainable internet and network connectivity while eliminating internet costs for remote sites. So we have seen an increase of this. You will notice throughout a couple of other budgets that there is point-to-point. We had a delay with supplies and equipment for networks and servers and things like that. So this kind of pushed this project off, but we'll be ready, if it continues to be approved, to get started come next fiscal year. And then computer equipment, this was one of our priority projects for last year. It is the citywide record system, also known as Tyler Project. We have started that, we're in, we're doing well with it, but it's not going to actually be completed until most likely September or October of next year. And that's why we're asking to move the funding ahead. Moving on to community and economic development, this is on page thirty-eight of your workbook. It begins on that page. We have several different economic development projects that we are currently working on. They're all listed here, I'm going to go over the dollar amounts for each one. So Buxton is fifty thousand dollars, Chaven is thirty thousand dollars. The environmental study is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The billboard campaign is estimated at forty thousand. The placer mobile data is estimated at fifteen thousand, and the hotel feasibility study is estimated at thirty thousand. And then there's also open counter, which I left off the slide, at another eighty-five hundred. This accounts for the majority of the five hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase. Some of the other things which are also current council priorities are gateway sign. So we have in here the purchase of the gateway sign at a little over two hundred and five thousand dollars. We continue to work on the downtown master plan and the downtown infrastructure documents. And those are both twenty-five, I'm sorry, the first one, the master plan is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the infrastructure documents are twenty-five thousand. And then we are going to put an additional digital sign. So everybody saw the new fantastic digital sign that we have over there across from the airport. We are planning to do another one on the other side of town, and that's at a cost of fifty-five thousand dollars. Moving on to the police department. The first thing that we have in the police department under facility maintenance is to...
Excuse me, we have, sorry, we have another question, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, under economic and development, various categories that funds are being requested for. But council has been talking about master planning, what our new residential neighborhoods are going to look like. Is that, does that come under this budget, or does it come under Public Works?
No, individual specific plans would come at annexation and would be done through development as development comes in. But the policies that outline the specific plan, that's all being done within the general plan update that we are working on. So the framework of how the specific plans will be outlined is a part of our general plan update, and that'll be hopefully adopted at the end of this year. And then as annexations come forward, those developments would then come in with a specific plan. That is what the master plan consists of, and it'll follow the framework that we will require in our general plan.
So the desires that the council may have about what our streets, what our landscaping, what our infrastructure looks like, perhaps what our housing elements are going to look like, are you saying that this falls under the master plan?
No, so technically, that's the standards and specifications, which is under the House of the Public Works Department. And the Public Works Department is working on that. That's a project that's been underway for a while, that Neron is, is picking up the pieces on. And then in terms of the elevations and what those houses would look like, that is a part of our design standards, but it's a tool that's used in a specific plan. So as those developments come forward, the elevations of what those houses will look like will be all a part of that plan, how it will feel, what it'll look like, that really will be outlined in a specific plan. But our standards and specifications are, are being updated as well, and that's, that's our, that's our backbone.
Okay, so does any of that come to council for approval?
Yes, the standards and specifications will come to the city council for approval. And then each specific plan will have to come to the city council for approval once those projects come forward.
So in order to enact all of this, is, is there a budget set aside to do that in the upcoming fiscal year?
I know the general plan update is already within, has been, it's within assigned funds. It's with, I'm sorry, the terminology.
No, that's correct.
It's signed funds, so we've been working on it for several years. So that's your framework, and we've held workshops with this with placeworks on the specific plan language, which the city council gave us direction to include in the general plan. So that's already been included in the framework. And then the specific plan, I'm sure Neron can get into, but that would be within his budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the set aside that Stacy's referring to, I believe at the beginning of this current fiscal year, we started with approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and we're estimating to spend about ninety thousand in twenty twenty-two. So that'll leave us about forty-six thousand for anything that comes up in twenty twenty-three and beyond if we don't use it all in that, in that year. Okay, so moving on to the police department. We do have budgeted forty thousand dollars to spend on painting the annex, the exterior of the annex building. Building and structures, we have police station construction. So this is where we set aside three million dollars in the general fund. That is committed funding and does not come out of what we call the unrestricted fund balance. In addition to that, we're adding a range classroom. The range classroom is a total of a hundred and fifty thousand, but there's only a hundred and five that will come out of the general fund, and the remaining will be split with capital improvement. So the additional forty-five thousand will be in the capital improvement fund for police. Vehicles, last year, we did make it a priority to have a patrol fleet replacement. We replaced, I believe, four patrol vehicles out of this fund, and we anticipate doing another four at a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Patch brand, patch and brand rebranding is estimated out of this fund to be twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we are asking in furniture and fixtures, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to furnish the police station out of the general fund, and you'll see another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of Measure P. Because obviously, we just had the groundbreaking, things are moving along, we're getting closer, and we are at the point where we can start looking at those costs. So moving on to code enforcement, code enforcement is, we're increasing the budget by forty-one thousand dollars. This has a couple of things in addition to the salaries and benefits previously mentioned, like micro trips and vaccines. We have been seeing increased costs there, but we want to increase the ability to do those things. Building and structure, we are currently in the process of working on the animal shelter upgrade. We have the bid documents. Council approved twenty thousand dollars in the current fiscal year. We're asking for an additional fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars in twenty twenty-three. And then the funding, you'll see later in the presentation, will come out of ARPA to actually construct the animal shelter upgrade. This is just for the bid documents. And then finally, we're asking for a code, animal control vehicle. This is for the second animal control employee. We did fund a vehicle last fiscal year. We're asking for another one at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars for this fiscal year. The reason why it's not showing as a large increase even with that seventy-five thousand is because that seventy-five thousand offsets from the prior year. So moving on to fire, we have this new CSG plan check contract in the budgets. That's at a cost of thirty thousand dollars. We have special projects, and this is volunteers, and we funded this in the current fiscal year twenty twenty-two, but it was contingent upon a spending plan. That spending plan never got, was put in place. We're asking for the council to still fund that twenty-nine thousand dollars to make it still contingent on the spending plan, and we're hoping to bring the spending plan to you, hopefully, in July? In July, I think we're doing it together. So hopefully, in the first meeting of July, second meeting of July, we'll have that spending plan to the council for their approval, and then we can start reimbursing the volunteers as we had previously discussed.
Thank you, and I think I have another question, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, thank you. I want to go back to the code enforcement on page fifty-eight of the budget, proposed budget. I noticed that for twenty-two, we adopted eight thousand dollars for spaying and neutering, and the same amount is being requested for two thousand twenty-three. I think I'm, you know, I'm a little bit concerned that we're having the same amount when we, we're having a lot more animals showing up at our shelter. And I understand right now that we can't take anymore because we're at capacity. So, you know, certainly, I would like to see our animals before they even get adopted out, rather than giving people vouchers that those animals go out already spayed and neutered. So I'm, I'm just concerned that eight thousand dollars is not going to, to handle that for, for our city as we're growing.
Chief, do you want to talk about that, please?
Councilmember Mayor, that fund is specific to fees and fines that we collect throughout the year. So that, that dollar amount that we get when we, example would be, we take an animal in that is not spayed and neutered, there's an additional fee associated with that when the animal's... the animal's returned to the owner, for example. That money that we collect from that individual goes into this account, and so we try and put as much money into that annual spay and neuter account as we can, but it's generally limited by the amount of revenue that we make the previous year. So we try to maximize that dollar without impacting the general fund dollars. Now, if the council sought fit to add more dollars to the fund, you certainly wouldn't get a complaint from us, because it's a very popular program.
Yeah, so if someone's animal is picked up and it's not spayed or neutered, would it behoove us to have them pay to spay and neuter that dog before they get it back, plus whatever fine that they have to pay? And that way, we've eliminated that particular animal from being able to reproduce?
I don't know that we have the legal authority to force the animals to get spayed or neutered, so that's, there's a different fee structure for that for those types of animals that are not, that are not-
Yes, I know it's a lot higher, okay. So this particular fee structure is for anything that goes out for adoption, for spaying and neutering?
No, this eight thousand dollars is committed to the public. So we collect the fees from those animals that aren't fixed, and then we turn around and offer a voucher program every year that we give back to the public so that they can spay and neuter their animals. But that's all based on the revenue that we receive from that program, to get back into that dollar.
Yeah, that voucher program is for people who come to the shelter who want to adopt an animal. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that can be, that can be the case, but it's a voucher-based program that anyone in the community who lives in the city limits of Los Banos, if you buy a new dog or a cat that you'd like to get spayed or neutered, you can participate in the voucher program and get a discounted rate for spaying or neutering your animal. So it's not just limited to just the animals that are coming in and out of the shelter, it's a community-based project. Does that make sense?
So I understand that part for the community base. I think where, you know, I particularly draw the line is animals that are being adopted out of the shelter, that whether or not they're given a voucher, rather than having those animals spayed or neutered before that family or person can pick up the animal and bring it home.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. Those animals are, those animals are.
They are spayed.
Before we are adopted, before we adopt them out, we either have them spayed or neutered ourselves, there's a lot of commute work back and forth with that sometimes, but we either arrange with the owners who are taking possession of the animal through that adoption to have it accomplished, or we do it ourselves.
Okay, and again-
But that's separate, that's separate from that eight thousand.
Yeah, what I would like to see, and what I'm hoping for our shelter, is that we, you know, I'm hearing that we can make arrangements for them to have the spaying or neutering happen, and that's probably via the voucher, but, you know, there's no guarantee that that animal is going to be spayed or neutered. And that's where, you know, the rubber kind of meets the road. If we're going to really have a successful program of adoption and sending animals out, then whether they pay for it themselves, or if they're eligible for a voucher, we need to make sure those animals don't leave the city of Los Banos without it being fixed.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and so I, you know, I don't know if that's something that we need to look at here in the future, but I certainly don't want to see any animals that are being adopted out of our shelter leave that haven't been taken care of before they go with someone.
That's probably, and I don't want to, I don't have the statistic in front of me, it's probably more of a rare occurrence where that happens. Sometimes I think it does, just out of necessity to get the animals out, but I think in large part, the animals are being taken care of appropriately and being spayed and neutered as part of the adoption process.
Well, I won't take up much more time on that one. That'll be a subject for another day that I can look at. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have a question, Mr. Yamas?
Just to provide some more in-depth insight into this process, I adopted a dog, boy's name is Troy, from Los Banos Animal Shelter, and before I was able to take possession of the animal, I had to have him spayed, and the folks went down to my house, inspected my fence, made sure that the animal wasn't going to escape, they ensured that the haws on the gate were operable. So it's a pretty intensive process, and again, I was not allowed to take possession of him, even though he was only six months old. It's like, he's kind of young, but they follow up on it, and again, they check your home, they walk your entire property line, so it's a pretty good program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Ms. Yamas.
And I'll just reiterate, if you'd like to give me some more funding for that program, I'd gladly accept it. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Chief. All right.
Okay, going back-
Back to Ms. Williams. Thank you very much for the conversation.
Going back to fire, on buildings and structures, Station Two had a addition built into the current fiscal year, and we weren't able to complete that addition, so we're asking to carry that money forward for 2023, and that is at a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And in addition to that, in building and structures, there's also eight thousand set aside for engine bay light replacement. And then another project to be carried over from the current fiscal year would be the electronic gate controller. That's at a cost of six thousand dollars. As I mentioned, it's in the current budget, we couldn't complete that, did have a lot of issues with the supply chain, and we didn't get to it this year, and we'd like to carry that over to the current fiscal year.
Ms. Williams, if I may interrupt and step back just a moment, that additional structure, that addition to the fire station two-
Yes.
-that is to be able to accommodate one more firefighter, is that correct?
That's correct, in the housing area, yes.
So we'll be able to have three firefighters at that station, is that correct?
Yes.
Which is considered a full team on a fire truck, which has been one of my priorities. I would never want to see a fire truck go out without a full team, and so we're very pleased to see that happen. Thank you.
And then in specialized equipment, something that we do annually is budget for turnouts and rescue equipment. The rescue equipment is, including hoses, is at a cost of ten thousand dollars, and the turnouts are budgeted at about eighteen thousand five hundred, and you'll see turnouts in Measure P as well. So moving on from fire, we're going to streets. Streets is budgeted to increase by one point seven million dollars. There are a lot of large projects in streets this year, but as a reminder, even though this is a general fund account, all of this expenditure is charged out to various accounts, so currently, the general fund doesn't pick up any aspect of the streets department. So beginning with street repairs, materials needed for improvements, we're asking for sixty thousand dollars, which is an increase of fifteen thousand dollars over the prior year. Improvement standards at a cost of twenty thousand dollars, and street survey for city streets at forty thousand dollars. Various streets overlay combined with Measure B funding is one point three million dollars. And then for vehicles, we are requesting two three-quarter ton utility trucks and one one-ton utility trucks. The three-quarter tons are at a cost of approximately sixty-three thousand each, where the one-ton is eighty thousand dollars. Requesting to purchase a backhoe at the cost of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Also, in specialized equipment, it's not shown here, are road plates at fifteen thousand. Those are the plates that they bridge the excavation to open pathways that you see on the road while they're doing the work. The specialized vehicles include a Bearcat oil distributor at a cost of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that will replace a current truck that's a year 2014, and then a stake-in form truck at a cost of eighty thousand dollars. This is carryover from the prior year as well. And as I mentioned before, even though this is a cost of three point, almost four million dollars, that would normally affect the general fund, this is charged out to various accounts, including gas tax and our STP. And then moving on to recreation, one of the big changes here for the increase of a hundred and forty-two thousand is that we currently have a vacancy in the rec department, and we've decided to, because of the vacancy, to eliminate the rec coordinator two position and instead make it a recreation supervisor. This supervisor position, making that change, would cost us an additional twenty thousand dollars to the general fund, and we are planning on doing some extensive CPR training at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars for that department. And then the community center will be receiving Wi-Fi, and that's at a cost of thirteen thousand Maintenance, one of, the budget is one point two million. One of the charges that we have here is for downtown tree trimming, so just in the downtown area, we are budgeted fifty thousand dollars to trim trees. Specialized equipment includes a dump trailer at the cost of twenty-one thousand dollars, which replaces a 1994 trailer, and a backhoe of fifty-five thousand dollars, which replaces a 1998 model. Also, the aerial boom truck, which is a carryover from the current fiscal year, it has been ordered, but it's not going to be delivered until December of this year, so therefore we have to move the funding to the current fiscal year, and that's a cost of a hundred, oh, I'm sorry, that's a cost of two hundred thousand dollars. We originally budgeted one sixty-five, but when it was purchased, it was increased by thirty-five thousand dollars. One of the things I overlooked as part of this does get charged out to the different LLD, so some of the maintenance workers' time gets charged out to various LLDs, and that's at a cost of nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So that's a brief overview of general fund expenditures. The revenues that we're anticipating bringing in, once again, are a little over twenty-five million dollars for the year. Expenditures going out are twenty-seven point four million, which leaves us with a deficit of two point three million, or almost two point four million. This is the fiscal year deficit. But this also includes funding that has been committed and/or assigned, so if we back that out, we then have an operating surplus of a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which means we're in the green, we're executing the fund balance the way we should be for capital and one-time spending. It's not, it's not a concern to spend the money. It is something that we had previously set aside, it's something that we plan to do, and the fact that we are operating with a surplus, even if it's only a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, is a plus to the city. So moving on to general funds, Measure H, which that balance did include that, but I like to break it out, because as I mentioned, we have that separate spending plan. So moving on to Measure H, and starting with the police department. The police department has six police officers and one sergeant budgeted in this fund. It cost us approximately nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for those employees, which is an increase of approximately three thousand from last fiscal year. The police station, part of the funding is in here, we are paying eight hundred thousand dollars of the total police station out of this account. We are asking to purchase a new motorcycle at the cost of thirty-five thousand dollars, which will replace a 2007 purchase. We're asking for an additional license plate reader, we did purchase one this current fiscal year. We're asking for another one, and then part of that patch and badge rebranding that I mentioned, we are asking to pay nine thousand dollars out of Measure P. And as you saw from the revenues, they're coming in strong, and we do have the funding available to make all those purchases. In dispatch, because we do have it separated out, we have one dispatcher and one community service officer funded out of this account at a cost of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for those positions, and then also a portion of the police station will also be paid out of here at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars, and that's the large increase that you see, two hundred and twelve thousand for the year. Moving on to code enforcement, Measure H, we have one code enforcement officer that is paid out of this account. The salary for this officer is a hundred and nineteen, the salary and benefits, sorry, is a little over a hundred and nineteen thousand. In addition to that, we are asking to purchase a clean air vehicle at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to our fleet for our growing code enforcement department. Measure H Fire funds two firefighters at a cost of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We are asking for Irem's text paging system, which is an additional component to the current records management system. This platform would allow for full integration for all phones and tablets. That's a cost of twenty-six thousand. We are asking to update the reporting platform for fire and emergency response services at a cost of seventeen thousand five hundred. And then additional turnouts here, and SCBA's or self-contained breathing apparatus, replacement bottles for the fuel station, and order additional bottles at a cost of fifty thousand dollars. Measure H Recreation, this funds one recreation coordinator, the cost is sixty thousand dollars. The projects that we are doing are playground installations, so we've already purchased the playgrounds for both Little Page and Davis, and we'll be installing them in this current fiscal year. The cost of installation for Little Page is twenty-one thousand, making the whole project eighty-one thousand dollars, and the cost for installation for Davis is twenty-one thousand, making the whole project one hundred and one thousand dollars. Then we're asking to purchase both the playground, or to purchase the playground and install it for Gardens One this fiscal year at a cost of a hundred and five thousand dollars. We would like to purchase a scissor lift to be used at the Miller and Luxe Building and the community center at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars, and then not included on this side is painting the exterior of the Miller and Luxe Building for a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. Moving on to special revenue funds, and starting with ARPA, we do have some of that money that we spent for ARPA already. The revenues that we brought in for the current fiscal year, four point nine million, will bring in the same amount for 2023. It shows a little bit different because it's taking into account the entries that we collected in the current fiscal year. Expenditures, we're estimating to spend one point seven million dollars in this current year, and then we're requesting to spend another three point three million in the upcoming fiscal year for an increase of one point five. The remaining funding should be received in July. We're asking to put a tree trimming program in ARPA of cost of two hundred thousand, so this would be in addition to the downtown tree trimming, and it would include different areas within the city. We funded half of the Rad Card program in the current fiscal year, and we're anticipating funding an additional five hundred thousand dollars. The fifty-five thousand is the admin fee that's associated with it, so we're asking to put that in there as well. Building and structures, we funded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for HVAC replacements in the current year. We've only spent thirty-six thousand of that, and so we're asking to roll over the remainder two hundred and thirteen thousand. We're asking to build a pickleball court at the cost of six hundred thousand dollars, and this is where the funding for the animal shelter would be. So the animal shelter upgrade that we're in, we're currently doing the bid documents for the animal shelter upgrade, this would actually be the animal shelter upgrade expenditure, and it would be at an estimate of a million dollars. And then finally, specialized equipment, we put in two hundred thousand dollars, and this was for police technology. We're estimating to spend a hundred of that in the current fiscal year, and we're asking to carry over that additional hundred thousand dollars. So the estimated balance at the end of 2023, if we do all these projects, would be about four point seven million dollars. The money must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. Measure P Police, this, Measure P is doing well, we're expecting an increase of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in revenues, and an increase of fifteen million in expenditures, but of course, this is our main funding source for the police department. This is where the loan will go, this is where the loan will be paid out of. The loan is not a traditional loan, we don't get the money right upfront, we have to show them the invoices, and then they'll reimburse the funding that way. So the revenue is not accounted for here, and it will be accounted for as it comes in. So it'll offset that deficit that we're showing in the fund balance. That being said, this is where the loan payment will come from. It is approximately a seven hundred thousand dollar a year loan payment. We will be paying for the police station, the majority of it this year, and we're budgeted out of this category, building and structures, for over sixteen million dollars. And again, that'll be some of the funding that we set aside, and then some of that fourteen million dollar loan that we received. Specialized equipment, usually we replace the MDCs as they break or as we can afford them. We're kind of trying to do an overhaul of the MDCs because they are a lot older. We have seventeen of them, we will be replacing a minimum of ten if we have- If we have more available funding, then we will add additional to that. But right now, we're planning to budget for replacing 10 at a cost of $45,000. And then that $250,000 that I previously mentioned, we're asking for an additional 250 to help furnish the new police station out of Measure P, the other half coming out of the general fund. As I mentioned, it does have a fund balance of a deficit of 9.6 million. If you're looking at the summary of fund balance, it's not anything to be concerned about because, again, I'm not showing the $14 million loan that will come in. And when we take that into account, we will be in the black. So CFDs for police, this is on page 79. We are anticipating a $16,000 increase to revenues and a $386,000 increase to expenditures. We have a healthy fund balance here. After this year, if this is adopted, our fund balance would be over $600,000. So the project that we're asking to do here is a radio console and equipment replacement. It's an overhaul of the entire system. We do want to share this cost with the fire department. So you'll see in a later slide that it's split with the fire CFDs. We're asking for $350,000 out of each account. The system would consist of a main tower and various radio location, or a main tower, radio location, and then various voting sites where the radio transmissions go from staff and are received by staff and then are rebroadcast. We last updated this in 2010. So we will replace all of that equipment with state-of-the-art equipment. And again, the ending fund balance, if we do this project, would be $638,000. Moving on to Measure P, Measure P is healthy. We are increasing revenues by $50,000 and decreasing expenditures by $82,000, or $82,000, yeah, I'm sorry, $82,000. We are purchasing turnouts out of this account and MDCs as well. The fund balance is $2.6 million. However, we have met our requirements in the expenditure plan as far as fire goes. So we need to sit down and have the chief, the chiefs are actually responsible, according to the ordinance, to create a new expenditure plan. So we'll have to set up a new expenditure plan on what we're allowed to do the funding on. It has a very healthy balance of $2.6 million, and it just takes us putting together a new plan, which we would have to adopt by ordinance.
Have to develop, by when?
We don't have a deadline to develop it. It would just be by ordinance.
By ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So when we're, when we have a plan, we're ready to spend the money, it'll come back to council at a public hearing and be adopted by ordinance.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
CFDs for fire. We have a slight increase here. And the reason that it kind of throws off the amount is because part of strike team, so if the employee is paid out of here, then it comes back in here. Again, we don't budget strike team revenues, so it makes it look like our increase to revenues isn't very high. Expenditures, it's that same radio console replacement project that I just mentioned at a cost of $350,000 split with police CFDs. So very little activity in this account. But it does have a healthy fund balance, and we're estimating to spend, or to end the year 2023 with $578,000 fund balance. Okay, moving on to Los Banas Park Impact Funds. So this is on page 138 of your book. These are impact fees that we collect with new development. With the permits that we estimated, we're anticipating increasing revenues by $156,000 and expenditures by $943,000. Part of those expenditure increases include landscape and irrigation at the Ag Sports Complex. So this is for filled renovations, which would include regrading the filts and improved irrigation. They would fix the netting. It would be replaced. And also, there would be signage put out to recognize the complex, and we would install trees around the perimeter of the park. That's at a cost of $265,000. The Ag Sports Complex Restrooms are another project at a cost of $550,000. There is a $20,000 request for the creation of an urban forest management plan and tree inventory, as well as other inclusions such as planting of 100 trees across five different park locations. And then finally, the splash pad design of $200,000. Moving on to landscape and lighting districts. No, Nira talked about this a little this evening, but there are two districts that are operating with a negative fund balance. One of the two districts are budgeted to deficit spend in addition to that. But signs of improvement include the annual increases, like the one you just adopted, and development in both of those areas. Additional park areas that aren't covered under LLDs are paid for out of the general fund maintenance budget. There are several different projects that are being done in the different districts. The districts start on page 147 and on page 200. And some of those projects include storm drain improvements at Ranchwood, storm drain improvements and landscaping irrigation at College Greens. Just mentioned a couple of storm drain improvements at Meadowlands, sidewalk improvements on the rail trail, storm drain improvements at Talbot Park. They're all listed out there. Specialized equipment at Mission Estates, which is the shade sale installation. We made the purchase in the current year, and we're asking for the installation in the new fiscal year. I think this is the fastest I've ever done this. Moving on to water. So this one's a little bit all over the place. Revenues are on page 209. On page 15 is the admin portion of the water department, and on page 203 is the maintenance portion of the water department. There's the decrease in revenues, and that is because of both penalties. We have the large balances on accounts due to COVID and us not being allowed to shut off water, which increased the bill, which increased the penalty, which, as you know, we previously set at a flat rate of $15 on a temporary basis, which is set to expire June 30. Connection fees, we're expecting permits to go down. Therefore, connection fees would go down as well. Expenditures are increasing by $3.8 million. Some of that is due to computer equipment or the citywide record system carryover that I mentioned previously. That will be $107,000 in this one. Professional services include things like the chromium VI mitigation at a cost of $155,000, test well construction at a cost of $175,000, well 16 documents at $45,000, and the groundwater sustainability at $150,000. The land purchase is for the well 16, and it's a carryover from prior years at a cost of $900,000 estimate. And then the Water Master Plan is also a carryforward. That's for the fairgrounds, water line, and valve replacement project. Vehicles, let's see, I don't have the vehicle here. I do have communication at Madison, which is the Wi-Fi project, and then specialized equipment, which includes safety shoring at $7,500 and the horizontal boring tool at $5,000. Let me check on vehicles. I didn't put it on my notes. Give me one second, please. So the vehicles in the water accounts are a 3/1/10 utility truck at $50,000 and an SUV at $65,000, both replacements. Wastewater, again, the penalties is an issue for the decrease and then sewer connection fees as well. The increases to expenditures include that Tyler project at $107,000. Professional and services for reporting compliance at $280,000 and improvement standards at $25,000. Storm drain improvements include the community center parking lot at $128,000, Pine Street storm line at $500,000, and West I Street storm pump repair at $30,000. Madison is looking to repair the floor and the roofing at $10,000 under Building and Structures. And the master plan improvements include 165 and 152 sewer line repair at $100,000 and the Crest Hills Lift Station rehab at $700,000. And we're asking to replace manholes for $30,000 to purchase a utility truck, a 3/1/10 replacement truck at $70,000. We will be putting Wi-Fi at Madison at a cost of $37.50 to this fund. And then there's also specialized equipment, including the safety shoring, horizontal boring tools, a border maker for $15,000, and a spray rig for $30,000. In the airport fund, we're increasing revenues by $10,000 due to the fuel costs and the revenue going up. Gasoline prices are also going up. So although our revenues are increasing, so are our expenditures. And then we are looking to do airport improvements, which include the fuel apron overlay at a cost of $40,000 and the runway overlay at a cost of $70,000.
Sonia, those overlays, are those FAA funds? Are those coming?
Yes, they would be. We would be reimbursed for them.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Solid Waste Fund, again, the revenues are decreasing both due to the penalties. And if you remember, we had that settlement agreement that we collected for $600,000. So that reflects here and is a reason why we have such a large decrease. Computer equipment, again, is Tyler, which is split here for $107,000. We do have the landfill closure project for this year at a cost of $4 million. And it needs to be completed by no later than December 31 of 2023. And then we also have a 1-ton utility truck replacement. And that's, that accounts for the increases of over $4 million. Internal Service Funds, we have three internal service funds, the fleet maintenance, information technology, and retiree medical health. The annual budget for fleet maintenance is over $1 million. We are requesting that we add a mechanic position to this department at a cost of $81,771. Again, internal service funds are charged out through the various funds. So we have the budget here, but then they get charged out and allocated based on usage. So the allocation for fleet maintenance is not necessarily the same for information technology or retiree medical health. And they get allocated throughout all the different funds, including the general fund and special revenue funds and enterprise funds. Information Technology is on page 242. We have an annual budget of $425,000. We are always doing large projects here, but if those projects can be specific to a department, they are charged out, as you see, like the point-to-point and the Wi-Fi projects that I've mentioned. Those will be charged out to who they affect. If it affects citywide, then it is put into this department. So we do have a computer replacement program annually, and we will be replacing several desktop computers this year at a cost of $35,000 and network replacements at a cost of $65,000. Retiree Health is our health cost for retirees. We have not received the actual amount from our consultants yet. We're anticipating that hopefully before we adopt the budget. But we're usually right around $2 million, anywhere from 1.7 to 1.9. So we're estimating $1.92 million for the year. And let's see here. And then finally, changes to personnel. So this is citywide, depending on how that employee is allocated. So as you know, you already approved the MOUs for these, but it's just a reminder that these are built into the budget. Firefighters Association received a 2% COLA. Dispatchers receive a 2% COLA. Public Works Unit, a 2% COLA. Police Officers Association, 2.75%. Police Sergeants Association, 2.75%. And miscellaneous, 3%. We thought we increased minimum wage this last time, but there is legislation pending to increase it again. We have not built anything into the budget because it's not, it hasn't been adopted. So if it does get adopted, it would be effective in January. So we would have ample time to bring it back to council for approval. Some of the changes that we made to personnel, some of them I mentioned already, some of them I have not. So we're revamping the Public Works Department. And by doing so, we are eliminating the Assistant Public Works Director position. And in place of that, we will be adding a Public Works Operation Manager, which we already have two. We will be splitting the duties for the current one with this one. So they'll split the duties. The cost of, oh, and then adding an engineering technician for support. So it's a $175,000 decrease to eliminate that Assistant Public Works Director, but it costs $141 for the Operations Manager, and then another $91,000 for the Engineering Tech, which is a cost increase of $57,000. And it's allocated through several different funds, depending on how those positions are allocated. I do have the breakdown if you're interested. The Coordinator position that we spoke of earlier, that would be at a cost of approximately $20,000. And again, that's eliminating the Coordinator 2 position, which is currently vacant, and making that a Recreation Supervisor position. We're adding a Fleet Mechanic at a cost of $82,000. We're adjusting the salary schedule for Police Services Manager position, and that would be at a cost of $2,043. We're bringing that up to light positions to make it level with the light positions. And then promoting one of the Accountant Position 1s to an Accountant Position 2 at a cost of $4,800. The salary schedule will be presented with the budget and to be adopted at the same time. So, as I said, that's the fastest I've ever done that. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. My first question, well, my first is compliments to, compliments to the staff. I know you've all been working very hard. The question, the total, total city budget, general fund, all our funds, what is our total city budget?
So you can find that on page one of the summary fund. Well, it's actually not on page one. It starts on page one. We've added the summary fund balance in here. And where that would be is under the call and requested expenditures. And you look at the overall budget, it's $101 million.
Okay, that's what I wanted the public to hear. You're handling a very large amount of money and handling it very, very well.
Well, thank you.
We're very pleased. Counsel, do we have any questions from counsel regarding the budget? Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, a couple of questions regarding the, the, is it a, what was the term, for the firing range?
The classroom range?
The classroom, yes, ma'am. In this expenditure, is that going to improve also the actual firing range and the firing positions for that location?
I'm going to let the chief explain it all to you.
Thank you for the question, council members. The classroom addition will be to provide improvements to, not the firing range area, because we like to keep that fairly open and flexible for our use, but it'll be the staging area where those people that are on their downtime, that aren't on the line, where they can sit and wait for their next exercise. The addition of the classroom will be literally that, a double-wide type of classroom with a restroom. Right now, there are no restroom facilities out of our range, and there hasn't been since it was constructed in 1979. And so we have big, day-long trainings. We take a portable out there. It's just, it's a long travel day to, a long trip to go back to a restroom. So the goal is to be able to provide classes there onsite. The commander and his range team just got their first rifle training course approved by post, and they actually taught the class to our own people. So we don't have to, we no longer have to send them out, excuse me, to Fresno or somewhere else to get them trained on the use and deployment of a rifle, patrol rifle. They do that here now. And so that will facilitate a better learning environment for our staff as we continue to grow and provide a professional environment to our people.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, it's a long time coming. I was surprised to see the condition of that range. But also, the firing range itself, the line, is that going to be improved in any capacity?
No, that's not in the initial concept of it. Rebuilding some of the berm might be, but we haven't gotten that far. The primary focus has been to bring in the classroom and improve that area surrounding it, a new shade structure, new seating area, new storage area, in addition to the classroom that has the restrooms in it.
As you guys have said, we have a good, positive environment to reinforce those marks, marksman skills. So I'm glad that's happening. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Mr.
I had another question regarding, now, the equipment replacement that we're having, the Bearcat, et cetera, what's happening with the old equipment?
So we sell them. We surplus the property and we sell it for profit.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. The Clean Air Vehicle, what type of vehicle is it, and what's the longevity of it, and what's going to be the cost of maintenance of that vehicle?
So that's also the chief's. He has some nails, so I'm sure he can.
The Clean Air Vehicle is another great question. We bought, I think, five of them a few years back. Brenda did, our Police Services Manager. You'll see the Honda, I'm sorry, the Toyota Priuses that we have out front. We have two of them that we deploy for our volunteers. The city has two for vehicles that they use, and we have a training vehicle that we send back and forth. We haven't identified the exact vehicle yet. More than likely, it will be an SUV. There's a specific list of vehicles that you have to purchase off of the Clean Air Program, and so we just don't know what that vehicle's going to be just yet.
All right, I guess the other question was, would it qualify? But we don't know, because we don't know what vehicles for some of the rebates that are out there for these vehicles.
This program is what I would consider a rebate program for the purchase of these vehicles. They're marked off significantly through the Clean Air Board program. I forget the exact name of it, but yeah, we got a really good deal on five vehicles a couple of years back.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Of course.
And one last point of question. In the Parks and Recreation, does this include funding to put up signage for some of these parks that don't have signs or park designation?
Do you want to talk about that? I believe it does, and I'll have Mr. Heim come up and explain that.
Yes, we have it included. It's just not included as a capital item because each individual sign comes in under $5,000. So it's getting funded out of our Measure H Recreation funding. Talked to Director Ton about bringing it as an item to our Parks and Rec Commission in July. We want to discuss the design of what they'll look like, but additionally, there's quite a few parks that we're not confident in the names of. We have some ABC names that we want to look at if there's going to be any changes on that. But there's definitely quite a few parks that I think we can confidently say will maintain their names.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. Regarding the sodding or reseeding, landscaping, is that going to remove the current weed? Because there's a patch of just weeds and different weeds and a third kind of weed out there. Is that going to resurface everything with a certain type of grass? I know all grasses are weeds, but.
Yeah, are you talking about at Ax Sports Complex or in general?
Just in general.
So we don't necessarily have a specific program for that. We do have an aerator that we use. There are certain locations, like sports fields, that we'll do weed and feed on. We will be in the process this year before September of completing the next landscape maintenance services contract. And I know that we're asking for alternatives to provide estimates for cost of extra services such as that. But it's, as far as like on a small project basis, when you, you know, little areas that have, say, just gone, turf has gone away, maybe it's covered in weeds. We try to hit those during the spring and fall. We do have, like I said, two major projects that come to mind as far as turf goes. One is at Ax Sports Complex as part of the per capita grant, which is a reimbursement through the state, Prop 68 funding, and that'll be regrading those fields out there and reseeding out there. The other one is at Meadowlands 2 Park, which we just recently did a volunteer project out, which is off of Snow Goose, and basically we'll be going in there and reseeding. That park is fortunately turned into, I don't know, probably like 90% weeds.
Yeah, again, you know, we're watering, but it's just weeds, so you know, why water something? But then you don't want it to be completely brown, so you're on top of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Counsel, any for the questions from counsel of staff regarding the budget? This is a workshop. We do have members of the public here, so I will open it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on the budget, as we do with a public forum, we give you five minutes.
Hi, I'm Anna McCauley, Los Banos resident. I got a question on animal license fees. We never get a renewal when ours are due, but we know when they're due, so we just go in and take care of it. But I'm wondering, you know, I know there's got to be a lot of dogs, and I don't know why cats aren't licensed either. They run loose and they don't stay in their own yard. They do their business elsewhere. But I'd like to see if you have, if there is anything in process where renewals are sent out to people who, pet owners. We take care of ours. We don't need a notice, but I know there's got to be a lot of people that don't, or maybe they, you know, choose to ignore it. But I think we should look at something for a revenue stream that continues more aggressively in pet licensing. Thanks.
So if I could address that, Mayor?
Yes.
Our new citywide records management system will actually address that, and it will have the capability to do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the city to add a reimbursement grant to my organization, League of United African American Citizens, for the bullying issues that we have here in the city, as Merced City did. And we're asking to have you add in, I mean, whatever you think's appropriate. But we think it's a major problem. I deal with some of the schools. I know it's a major problem. So we work with the schools voluntarily, so we don't have anything for that. A reimbursement grant would be nice, which means that everything we get, we turn around and spend on the schools or some of the different areas in town. It's a big problem. It's a big problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Anyone else in the public like to speak? All right. This is an information item only tonight, and so budget adoption is scheduled for the next council meeting in two weeks. Very good. And that is my clue to go on to the next item. Very good. We'll move on to item 10, which is our advisement of public notices. We have four reports tonight, and for that, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the first item is for a site plan review for Lofton Stadium. The Planning Commission did hold a design review last Wednesday on this item, and it's for three new buildings at Lofton Stadium. So the Planning Commission will be reviewing and will be holding a public hearing on Wednesday, June 8th, at 6:00 p.m. The next item is for a mobile food vendor permit. This would be located at 1400 Mercy Springs Road, and the mobile vendor is for J&amp;A. It's Elgrin, say, Jalisco, number eight, J&amp;A. And the next public hearing is for a conditional use permit for a spray booth for Speedy Auto Services located at 1235 E Street. And then the last public hearing item is for a mobile food vendor for Intimio Cortez Jr., doing business as Taco Mex. This would be located at 740 G Street. This was the previous location of Junior's Tacos. It's just replacing the original mobile vending unit that was there. All of those public hearings will be held on Wednesday, June 8th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Now we go to our city manager's report. Mr. Pinero? Oh, sorry. No report tonight from Mr. Pinero. Moving on to item 12, my report on MCAG, PCE and Measure V. We're excited to see in the budget, looking at that bike path, getting the planning stages in place for that. And then PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, we have the e-bikes. So we have, you can get some money to get yourself an electric bike. They're very popular in the Bay Area. When they opened that up, when they opened up that program in the peninsula, it went, all the money went very, very quickly. Everybody wanted one. So they're handy as heck. You can get around really well, and in a clean and easy way, you don't have to start your car. So e-bikes. Have a look at the PCE website. All right. And now we will move to our city council member reports. Tonight, we start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give comment and congratulations, I guess, in a way, to our San Joaquin Valley National Cemetery. They've not been able to have a memorial service since COVID came in 2020, and this year was their first service back at the national cemetery. The director, Mr. Fred Bryant, received notice, I think it was like the latter part of April, so he didn't have a lot of time to put this event together, but it was absolutely beautiful ceremony. They've done some wonderful improvements out there on the grounds with landscaping and burial sites. And our mayor was a guest speaker out there, and it was just a beautiful day. And we also had our local ceremony here in Los Banos Monday for our memorial service, and our council attended and public officials. So it's, to me, it's just a heartfelt thing to honor our fallen soldiers who fought for our freedoms here in the United States, and that's a good thing. I had made a council member request back on May 11th in regards to the community members who come at each of our meetings about the mobile home park and their concerns. And so I would like it to be on the next agenda item for the council's consideration, to have the Chief of Police give us an update on what's going on, because we hear their story, and I'd like to hear what the city is doing in regards to the situation out there, so that we can have a better idea of what's happening and if there's any additional things that we can do to help them. So that's my report for tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next, we go to Mr. Yamas. Hang on just a moment. My gut, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would add that, or add to Mrs. Lewis's comments about the Memorial Day services held at the federal cemetery and here locally, they were very well put together. And again, it's one of our traditions, which makes us unique, I think, throughout the world, how we honor our fallen soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. Second, I'd like to thank Commander Reyna and Captain Calicchio, is that correct? They put together, inventoried some obsolete and no longer utilized fire equipment, turnout gear, et cetera, and that was donated to Hearts of Ukraine for their search and rescue operations. So again, not participating in the war effort, but just a humanitarian aspect and part of Los Banos. And I also want to thank City Manager Pinero for helping to coordinate that. I greatly appreciate that. Again, it's going to a good cause to help the folks dealing with that situation. I'd also like to see this item regarding the homeless enclosure, provide a little more in-depth understanding of the decision, the doc process, what were the expectations? Did we meet those expectations, and what were the benchmarks used to decide whether or not we have met those expectations? And if not, what are we doing to correct them? I think that it's important for these residents and citizens generally to have trust in their government, their elected government, because then what happens is distrust, frustration, and folks start taking things into their own hands, and it just kind of snowballs. So I think that it's important that we have some kind of oversight and transparency, especially when it affects them in such a personal way. So again, it's just a matter of trying to get a better understanding, letting them know that we are listening to them and we are, we do care about the situation. So I'd like to see that. Other than that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. And next, we go to Mr. Jones.
No report, Mayor.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to kind of echo Ms. Lewis's also. I did not get the chance to go to the San Joaquin, but I did hear quite a bit about it. But I did attend the memorial here that was held by the VFW and American Legion. I enjoy it every year, and you know, it hits hard to my heart also. I also want to thank Sonia for a quick and a very in-depth report on the budget. I'm sure it's going to get a little better at the next shot, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And yes, we are here. Let me check it out once again. Whenever I go to adjust the mic levels, I'm trying to bring them up so everyone can hear everyone, then it prevents me from being able to shut them off. So there we go. It's a very unfriendly console. I too am very concerned with the homeless. I'm very, I was pleased to hear that the patrol had been stepped up and that had been noticed. That, I want to commend our staff on that, our police. We are hearing you. We want to ask, until we can get some more services there and a more approach, call every time. And if it's, and I've been instructed by our police chief, if there's a trespassing issue, you can call 911. If there's a danger issue, call 911. If it's just a concern and not an immediate emergency, 827-7070 and dial zero. And call every time you are concerned. Make the call, and then we can get some patrol out there to address the issue. In the meantime, we are going to be bringing that back to council for a discussion. The homeless issue, you may recall, a year ago, we had these, these problems were all over town. The, I'm going to talk a little bit on that because I think the public needs to know. There's a law, a legal case, Boise, Martin versus Boise, and the law says that if you do not have a place to house the homeless, you cannot ask them to leave public property. It's not a law, it's a court ruling. And so we, with all our partners, Assembly Member Gray worked very hard bringing that money in from the state to create the project room key, where we have homes and a hotel. And then, but we don't have enough homes or hotel yet, so we had to find a place for an encampment. The encampment is there. It's called a sanctioned encampment. It's fenced, but it's still not, we haven't solved the whole problem yet. We've solved some of it. We've solved a lot of it. We've addressed a lot of it, but we haven't solved the whole problem. It is ongoing. We hear you, and we will continue to work with you until we can get it solved to the best of our ability. It's kind of nice to see the press table again. We've had many reporters through the years, and it's very nice to see that. So we look forward to seeing you there at all our meetings, because that's the way we get our message out to our citizens, our residents. Thank you so much. All right. One more thing now, Memorial Day, we had two Memorial Day services in Los Banos. We have the good fortune of being only about 13 miles from one of the most beautiful national cemeteries. And I did have the honor to speak there. I had the honor to, it was especially a great honor for me, not only the mayor representing the city of Los Banos. My father, my parents are buried in that cemetery. And then our local cemetery service, our veterans gave a beautiful service. One of our veterans could barely walk, but he still had to plant that flag, and he still had to make that journey across. So we thank you very much for your service. We thank you for the beautiful ceremony, and we don't ever want to forget, and that's how we keep it in everyone's minds. And I think those are it for now. Very good. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Mr. Lambert?
I'll second him.
A motion by Ms. Lewis, second by Mr. Lambert, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at 8:23 p.m.